I'll call the public portion of our meeting to order at seven o'clock. And Jim, would you be listening to the pledge? allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on our agenda is the gender review. The only addition I have is under budget timeline adding action items to that. That's under the superintendent's report subsection C. Any other agenda items? Oh, two. Yes, Charlene?
I would like to add a brief discussion about, oh, I'm sorry. Did someone else have their?
No, I recognize you, Charlene.
Oh.
Oh, the microphone, if you could use the microphone.
Okay, can everyone hear me?
No.
Just give it a second.
Hello, okay. I'd just like to add a brief discussion about the mold contamination in all the Pop Whalen locker rooms. I'm guessing that might want to come under superintendent's report?
I, Pop Whalen isn't our building, so I'm more confused. Could you just explain your rationale?
I was watching the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen meeting of two October of 2024, and the town manager, James Pino, during his report, mentioned that all of the locker rooms at Pop Whalen, one of which our students use, our Kingswood hockey teams use, have been closed because of mold contamination. And I guess I'm having the discussion now. That's what I'd like to talk about. That's why I would like to add it to the agenda.
I'm hard pressed that we talked about a building that isn't ours, especially the town is currently doing the remediation for the moment.
Are our students going to be using the locker rooms?
Not until they do remediation and not until the hockey season starts for another couple of months.
So I guess my concern is that the town manager stated that they were going to be doing remediation. And my concern is how can we be assured, since we don't have an MOU with the organization that rents it to us, how can we be sure that the remediation has been successful enough that our children, our Kingswood regional children will be safe in those facilities?
We can bring forward information next month if that's okay with you, Charlene. It's not really a discussion I think we're ready for at this point.
I'm sorry, what?
We can bring forward information next month after the superintendent speaks with the town manager. But I don't think we have any information at this point other than the town of Wolfboro has said to the public that they're doing remediation. They'll have locker rooms ready for safe usage.
Have you gotten any kind of information? I remember that part of the meeting, part of the input during this discussion was, I think it was Brian DeChesne, your dad, who was wondering if there would be a definitive explanation of where the mold started. It's my understanding it started in the Kingswood locker room.
I don't have any information on that.
But we'll have that by the next meeting?
I don't have that information, but I know the superintendent can speak with the town manager and ask, are these locker rooms safe for usage by our school athletes? And that's the remediation completed.
Okay, well, I guess since we just discussed it, it doesn't have to be added to a gender review. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to add it to the next month's agenda unless you collect that information or?
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry. I thought I had asked for us to have that at the next board meeting, but yes.
We can add that to the next meeting agenda.
Okay, thank you.
So you're about to, you had something?
Yeah. End this morning, okay. Respectfully, I'd like to make a motion under the Academic Affairs Committee section to remove the policies that are up for withdrawal tonight, to have them added to the next board meeting's agenda instead. We did not have adequate time to review them in committee, and we would like to do that at the next Academic Affairs meeting.
Well, this is just first read?
Correct, we did not first, we did not need them at all. In the.
Okay, so when we get to, when we get to academic, the committee reports, I guess we can add that as an action item, but I wouldn't, I mean, this is a gender review that completely isn't a motion, so.
You don't want me to take them off the agenda, that's what I'm asking.
I mean, I would assume that you guys had reviewed them before you brought them to the rest of the board.
If I can clarify, we had a brief discussion, I believe, of one of the policies, but the fact that they've all been brought forward for review, we feel that we would like to remove them from first review tonight and have them for first review at our next meeting because of inadequate time to thoroughly go through all of them.
Okay, and this is the withdrawal section?
Just the withdrawals, yeah.
Is that okay with anyone else? I have no objection, so if you want to do, so we'll remove the subsection for under Academic Affairs Committee Report. And we won't remove, or we won't do the first read for withdrawal?
Correct.
Okay, I'll read that from the agenda. Anything else? Hearing none, we can, and make sure that's on the agenda for the next meeting. I just, we don't have some of that information, so we'll have the superintendent contact the town manager and figure out when those rooms will be safe and what they found the original source of the mold was, so.
And how they're going to assure our families?
Yeah, yeah, of course. We'll have communications with the student athletes and their families. Next is the student presentation, Principal Morrison. Take it away.
Good evening, thank you for coming. And thank you for getting us started on a great year with your postcard, well wishes flyer. What a great way for us to start, knowing you were right behind us. Thank you for stepping this along. Our school is very excited to share our work in math with you tonight. We'd like to highlight not only the problem-solving strategies, but also the people that our students, your students, work with. My colleagues, Katie Hill and Christie Diamond will get us started, and then we will bring out the headliners, the third graders.
Good evening. Given that we are at the beginning of our school year, tonight's presentation highlights several current third graders who are actually demonstrating their proficiency in the second grade math competency. The competency is to understand and use place value and properties of operations to add and subtract. Specifically, these students will use and model strategies to subtract within 1,000, explain why their subtraction strategies work. This second grade scale sets them up for grade three, where the state standard requires that they fluently add and subtract within 1,000, fluently. Please join me in welcoming our EES Math Coach, Christie Diamond, and several third grade students, James, Jensen, and Quinn.
Good evening. I have the pleasure of working with teachers in grades eight through six in Effingham, New Durham, Tuffinboro, and Crescent Lake schools. Over the course of the school year, I will collaborate with 30 classroom teachers across the district and interact with about 450 students. I have worked with this particular group of students since they were in kindergarten. That's one of the things I love about this job, getting to kind of follow a cohort of students through the grade levels and watch them grow. It is my pleasure to present to you these third graders tonight. They're going to guide you through an abbreviated version of an instructional activity that they've practiced many times in the classroom. So now I will let these three amazing third graders introduce themselves and the activity.
Hi, my name is James Duplonsky.
That's just a sound mic for the recording. That mic will be much better. Sorry about that, I know it's a little deceptive. Thank you, sorry.
Hi, my name is James Duplonsky. I have hockey practices on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Hi, my name is Jensen Smith, and I like to play with my baby cousin, B.
Hi, my name is Kynor He, and I run a farm.
You are going to be.
Good catch.
Good catch.
You guys can just hold it in for that's easier.
You are going to be working on a math problem with us. You are going to be randomized with a partner. You and your partner will be working together.
Use these cards that Jensen just gave you to find your partner and go to a board around the gym. Use the way that you know.
Is everyone next to each other a partner?
So you were just given some cards that if you look at them and perhaps look at your partners, you might notice some patterns and be randomized. Please find your partner and then make your way to one of the stations that are around the room and attempt to solve the math problem that is going on.
So who has five?
We did that to help some people.
They needed help?
Yeah, they need to help.
Are we looking for two ducks?
All of, you're together.
All the problems.
All right.
But also.
I would, I would say.
We got. We're just, these are. This is new math. Effingham School, give me five. Please stop what you're doing and let me have your ears.
We are going to do a gallery walk. This is when we look at each other's or as we look around the other boards, please bring back something that you noticed and wonder about.
All right, mathematicians, we're going to meet over here at our model student work. So anyone in the audience and all the game players, randomized game players, if you mosey this way, that would be great. So did anyone have anything they noticed after doing the gallery walk from the six or seven boards? It all had the same problem, by the way, the six or seven boards. Anyone notice anything, anything in common, anything different amongst them? Different approaches, old math. Any other notices or wonders? So you've just participated in and/or survived the gallery walk, where we would use this as an instructional strategy. Students would go and look at how other people fought about problems and notice and wonder about their own problem-solving strategies. We're going to have a guided gallery walk of James's, Jensen's, and Quinn's thinking. They each approached the same problem that you did differently, and they'll each speak to how they approached the problem.
I approached the problem with a number line. So I added 80, and then I added 2 and got to 200. And then I got 82 because I know 80 plus 2 is 82.
I used number chips so that I could figure out the answer quickly.
I used part part hole so, so I could answer it easier.
I think our, we, mathematicians are prepared for some questions or comments. Should there be any from the gallery? Does anyone have a question or a comment?
Did you like being able to use color? Color markers and whatnot? Because I see red and green. Does that matter to you?
Uh, I think everybody did.
Very good. Explain chips, yeah.
All right. Chips are like these cool little ways that you could use to figure out the answer. They could, tens could be like triangle, they could be square, they could be literally any shape.
Oh, those bitches. So they represent the number?
Yeah.
Do you guys think the different methods you use help you just learn how to do math in your head a little quicker?
Yeah.
Why is that?
Brody, what is the beginning of the question? How did you do it quicker?
I said, I asked, I said, does learning these different ways of doing math help you learn how to do math in your head?
Uh, yes, that's what everyone said.
And then I asked why, and then they had a game of mine.
This? So the part part hole is where you put the, um, the answer in here, and then the, um, the thing that goes with it in here, and then the missing number that makes this in here.
So how did that help you find 82?
Um, so it helped me because I knew I had a missing number.
Substituting means.
Can you say that again?
What is substituting? I'm on my card.
Substituting, substituting is when they're able to see a number represented in different ways and just kind of know it by looking at it pretty quickly. And it does help build their fluency with math, that they can see it and know it, right?
Yeah.
I wonder if Quinn is looking at that part part hole when I gave her the problem. She just knew the answer. So I said, can you give me a model to show how you know the answer? And she drew her number bond, just all filled in, parts and the holes, so. They have some amazing mental math strategies and neat ways of representing and thinking.
On Jensen's, it looks almost like a ten frame, and that's where some regimen of that.
Yeah. Did you even know that when you wrote it up to Jensen?
I guess usually do that for the answers, like I always do.
Something I always do about the way that Jensen reported and then he, the number line, is I think a lot of us just think it's a subtraction problem. But when you look at the board, I would see a subtraction sign that the number line and then the work that he reported shows the adding on to the 82, about 118 to build up to 200, as opposed to probably a lot of us would just think of the subtraction algorithm, so.
Grades one through five has a huge focus on place value, so they can really understand what they're looking at as far as hundreds, tens, ones, thousands, and build on what they know to figure out what they don't. They're in bridge.
So thank you for joining us, but Brody, that's the end of the mental gymnastics. Thank you for joining us.
All right, so next, we ready? Awesome, okay, next we have the acceptance of the minutes. The first seven minutes is September 9th, our regular support meeting. That was held at the Kingswood Arts Center, so there's no additional edits. I'd say the motion was approved of those minutes. Moved by Dr. Beth, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Jim. So motion by Dr. Beth, second by Dr. Jim, seeing no additional edits. Kathy, can you call the roll once you're ready?
Tom?
Aye.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim Hemmings?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Charlene?
Oh, sorry.
We'll go again.
Dr. Beth?
Yeah.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye. Excellent. Next is the September 17th Academic Affairs Committee meeting minutes. And in attendance that meeting was Tom Bigford, Dr. Beth Shackler, Mary Shilriff, and Charlene Seig. So someone who was on that committee, there's no any additional edits, can make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Can I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Charlene. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, you can call the roll, please.
Tom?
Has this automatically folded in the earlier discussion about is wrong?
No.
No, neither, neither just, yeah, this is what happened at your meeting. We're just accepting the minutes of what happened at that meeting. And we've removed, when we did gender review, we removed the section four under the Academic Affairs Committee. So it's all good.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Um, could we, I know the voting has started, but there's an inaccuracy in the minutes based on an action we just took. And that was just pointed out to me. The minutes state that we reviewed policies, i.e. I H A N blah blah, as first reads for withdrawal. And we, part of this meeting, we had a discussion and felt that we had not adequately discussed those. So I think that.
But did you discuss them at the meeting?
So briefly, that the committee members don't feel as if they were adequately discussed, and so therefore we need to amend the minutes. And I think that's what Tom's question was.
If you discussed them at the meeting, that's what happened and it meets the public record, even though it was briefly. And I'm saying that, that.
But it says as first reads for withdrawal, and that, that means that we, I don't recall voting, did we vote on those?
Yeah, we discussed.
Was there a vote?
There was a vote, we recorded the vote.
There was a vote, so we have to keep that in the meeting minutes, Charlene, because it happened. And that doesn't negate the fact that it comes, you know, you guys came to convenience and you know I want to review some more, removed it from first read on the agenda. So I would ask that we keep the meeting minutes as they are because that's what happened at the meeting. I understand you're very about one, but we can't change what happened, that's what happened. So how do you vote?
Um, I think I'm going to abstain because I think there's some confusion.
Maybe to clarify, the ministers reflect what happened in the meeting. We had a discussion, we didn't feel like we had enough. We brought that up, so rather than the minutes of the meeting, when we get to the Academic Affairs report, that's where we'll report that we want to not move those policies forward.
Yeah, that's fine, but I thought we already entered gender review, removed it from the agenda. That feels like it's addressed, it's not on the agenda. You guys aren't moving it currently forward for first read, and you had a discussion, but there's nothing there that indicates that, you know, I think we're overthinking it. We'll, we'll let you guys review those, those items for a first read at a future meeting date. Okay? All right, so Tom and Dr. Beth and Mary, you guys voted yes, and Charlene liked to abstain.
Yes.
Okay, that's perfectly fine. All right, having worked through those. Next, we have the September 24th Buildings and Maintenance Committee meeting minutes. Present was Tom Bigford, Dr. Jim Manning, and Jim Didman. Present was Tom Bigford, Dr. Jim Manning, and Jim Pittman, Guy was not present. So, one of the three who were present, make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So move.
Moved by Dr. Jim?
I'll say.
Seconded by Tom Bigford, okay. Is there any discussion on these meeting minutes?
I think we're good.
Okay, I want to make sure we don't get into voting if there's additional discussions, I, I don't want to rush anyone. Okay, hearing no further discussion, Kathy, you can call the roll.
Tom?
Hi.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
And do I call on Guy?
Yes.
I would imagine you would never abstain too, but, yes, I would still call on him. Um, and then next, we have the manifest approval, um, in the amount of five million four hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars and seven cents. Um, I would ask for a motion to approve the manifest as presented.
So move.
Moved by Jim Pittman, seconded by Dana Sreer. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Kathy, you can call the roll on the board.
Tom?
Hi.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Charlene? Um, Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Dr. Manning?
Yeah.
Brody?
Hi.
Dana, I'm sorry.
Dana?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, with that, we now enter the public input, it's fifteen minutes, three minutes per individual, unless extended by a vote of the board, fifteen minute period can also be extended, and I ask that everyone be respectful, no cross talk at each other, um, polite, and, um, go right ahead and start over there.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, folks. Um, some of you may know who I am by some degree, most of you probably don't know who I am, so I'll tell you who I am. My name is Barry Aniston, Tufton Borough resident over fifty years. Former Governor Wentworth's school teacher back in the eighties when Mr. Sreer was a young man. Um, after that, I retired from teaching and went into the construction business and then forty year career, did quite well for myself and had a lot of fun. My late wife Jane, also was a Governor Wentworth's school employee, working with some autistic kids as teachers aides, stuck with the Tufton Borough General, Tufton Borough's Center School, and going on to the middle school. I have two grown children in their early thirties, son and daughter, who went to Governor Wentworth's School District. And I have three grandchildren, two of whom attended this very school right here, but that's not why I'm here. I'm here to talk about the chairman of the school board and a letter that he wrote about me. Normally, I wouldn't respond to anything he wrote about me. In this particular instance, I've had too many people say too many things to me, saying, how can you put out with that? The last straw with my ninety-six year old father, he says, who is this that wrote this letter and said those things about you? And that was the final straw, so. You all, you all have a thing of paper, you've got little letters. In the letter, I was called uninformed and rambling, unable to listen and understand, out of touch with reality, had my head stuck up in my butt, and had no idea what I was talking about, and I was an unproductive person. Well, any of you that know me, probably can figure out that that's not very true. The attack letter was about mountain bike trails in Wolfborough, had nothing to do with the school board, nothing to do with anything, it was my support of mountain bike trails. Everything he wrote in his letter was incorrect, I never mentioned grants, I never mentioned Wolfborough losing two hundred thousand dollars. Everything was outright, outright lies or half truths, and he seems to be good at being a user of half truths and outright lies. He asked if we'd be respectful and polite when we're here, but his letter wasn't respectful and polite, he's kind of do as I say, nor as I do. That's not leadership, the leader of the board chairman is to do a good job to set a good example for fellow board members, administrators, teachers, support staff, and especially the students. This is not how you set a good example, by putting this out for print in the local newspapers. I have a lot of respect for my ninety-six year old father, I have a lot of respect for my elders. I'm an elder now, Mr. Duchesne has no respect for his elders. You're supposed to respect your teachers, respect your elders who've had life experiences. Mr. Duchesne is about twenty-five years old and has never gone through the life experiences that I have, many of you people in here, because we've been through life, we know how it is. So I'm not very happy with him.
Okay, that's thirty minutes, but I'll let you finish.
Okay, and my last thing was, you know, he's kind of a Jekyll and Hyde, talks out of one side of his mouth and says something out of the other side of his mouth. He's not setting a good example. If the young man who's the honorary board member was here tonight, I would tell him, whatever you do, don't do or aren't your predecessors to sit down. And it was up to me, I would have Mr. Duchesne stripped of the chairperson, because I don't believe he's mature enough or experienced enough to have that position. And at best, I would just see, see, see him thrown right off the school board, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public input? Seeing them, I, um, I will say I do take offense to some of those things, but I won't get into it, but when someone calls my eighty-four, eighty-seven year old grandfather and my father and asks that in the newspaper multiple times, I do take offense to it, and at time I will reply. Um, it's my right to free speech, um, and the gentleman who just spoke has his right to free speech and is entitled to his opinions. And I think that's about the end of it. I do have respect for my elders, but just not those who may even call to my family. I love my family dearly, and I don't think the things that have been said about some of them in the newspaper has been the, um, professional, so. That's all. We can move on to the superintendent's report.
Chair? Could I ask, could I ask you a question?
Yes.
Um, am I? I didn't turn it on, you're supposed to be in charge. See? Oops, okay, I turned it off, my bad. Um, mine is means on, huh, who knew? Um, I, I've read through these things several times, and I have been unable to detect anything in your responses that have to do with the Governor Wentworth Regional School District. Is, is there something I'm missing, or?
I mean, no, nothing about the school district, the board, or anything that would do with the government, or my personal opinion on bike trails in the town of Wolfborough, but I don't want anything back and forth.
Well, I, I understand that, but it, it seems to me that you were clearly not acting in your position as the chair of this, the Governor Wentworth Regional School District, and I would just like to point out how, how dearly we hold our First Amendment rights regardless.
Okay, well, that's, that's why I don't really want any more commentary on the matter. Everyone, I think, has said their piece, and we're going to move on to the rest of the business of the meeting, doing the business of the school district, and the board, and concentrating on what's important, which is our students, staff, and families, so. With that, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, before the superintendent's report, the student representative reports. So Jack Larson is unable to be with us tonight, um, because he's part of the very successful golf team, and they have a match where all seniors must attend this evening. However, I have the next best thing, so please direct our attention to the screen.
Welcome to Coffee and Connections with the Superintendent. My name is Caroline Ericallian, Superintendent for Governor Wentworth Regional School District and Middleton School District. I'm joined by Jack Larson, our new student school board representative to the Governor Wentworth Regional School District School Board. First, I'd like to thank all of our custodians and facility staff for their hard work to prepare our buildings for a wonderful start of the school year. There's always so much work that goes on over the summer that we should recognize. And on that note, I'd like to thank all of our instructional staff, all of our educators, for a great start of the school year. We had open houses over the past few weeks at all of our schools that were very well attended. Thank you to all the families who attended and participated in conversations with teachers and our staff in our schools. So now I'd like to turn it over to Jack for a, an update from the student perspective.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here. Alright, this past month, the Student Council went on a field trip to a trampoline park where they did some team bonding, but they also planned for homecoming. This planning included dress up days, fundraisers, ticket sales, and the homecoming dance itself. Speaking of homecoming, homecoming week will start October fifteenth. Students will participate in different dress up days throughout the week, leading up to our pep rally on Friday. On Friday night, the boys' football team will play Manchester West at seven o'clock at home. The homecoming dance will be on Saturday, the nineteenth. In recent athletic news, the Kingswood Golf Team currently sits at seventh place in the standings, which has locked them up a spot in the state championship on Tuesday, October fifteenth. After a very close loss to Pembroke this Saturday, the Kingswood Varsity Football Team will head to Merrimack Valley on Friday, October eleventh, as they hope to break their losing skid. The boys' soccer team will head to Convaux this Tuesday in hopes to break their three game losing skid. They also have a rivalry game against Kennett at home this Friday at seven o'clock. After a great team win against Guilford, the girls' volleyball team sits at sixth place in the division with a seven and three record. Their next game is away this Wednesday, October ninth, at Prospect Mountain. With a big bounce back win against rivals Kennett this past Saturday, the girls' field hockey team will head to South Heagan this Tuesday. The girls are currently sitting at twelfth in the division with three games left to go. The girls' soccer team will host Convaux this Tuesday at home at six o'clock. Then they will travel to Kennett on Thursday, the tenth. The girls have tied in their last two games, and they hope to get back in the win column this week. Looking ahead, FBLA's Fall Leadership Conference will be this Wednesday, October ninth, at the University of New Hampshire. The DECA Fall Leadership Conference will be on Wednesday, October thirtieth, and it will also be at the University of New Hampshire. Once again, thank you on behalf of the student board for letting a voice from the inside of the school be on this committee. We greatly appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you, Jack, certainly a lot of exciting activities going on across the district. I'll see you at the next school board meeting. So we'll close out with a plug for ParentSquare. ParentSquare is the best way to communicate with our educators and really across the district. You can download the app and, and log in online to receive principal and district newsletters and notices. Currently, we have a communication survey that is live for another week for families and all staff across the district to take to share your thoughts about district communication. We really appreciate your feedback. Next, you'll see a sign up for a parent advisory group to help us analyze the results of the survey and to help the district communicate and engage with our community, um, even, even more. So thank you, Jack, and thank you everyone for viewing this, this edition of Coffee and Connections with the Superintendent.
Thank you for, to Jack for being good sport and sharing his update on connections with the superintendent.
Yeah.
Okay, moving along. Thank you, Kathy. Moving along to the superintendent reports section of the meeting. So first, the district update, I shared some of that in my, in my TV edition regarding open houses um, and communication, um, with the, with the community. The communication survey, um, is still active for another week through ParentSquare, uh, and we really are looking for feedback from everybody, from families and employees, um, so we can use that information later in order to make a communication plan. And that's part of what the parent advisory group will do, uh, will look at those results and create a communication plan. This is part of what's required of us in the strategic plan. So more information on that data and results to come. Also, in the district update, we added a page on student enrollment. So we added, um, enrollment effective October first, this is a time when we share this with the board and the public every year. So for those who are listening, I'll just list the current enrollment for this year effective October first in each of our schools. So at Carpenter, we have one hundred eighty-three students, Crescent Lake, one hundred eighty-one, Effingham Elementary, a robust one hundred and twenty. New Durham School, one forty-four, Osiphe Central, two seventy-nine, Tufton Borough South Central, ninety-eight, The Middle School, three forty-six, High School, seven twenty-one. So that's two thousand seventy-two across the district. In addition, we have twenty-three students participating at Lakeside Academy, and we have ninety-four additional students who come from other districts, um, into our tech center, Lakes Region Tech Center, uh, for a grant total of two thousand one hundred and eighty-nine this year. And that concludes the district update, any questions about that agenda item? Okay, I will move along. The next update is inclement weather procedures. So, um, as we do every year, uh, we send the message to all families, this was last Friday, September twenty-seventh, um, regarding, um, the procedures we used to make the decisions to either hold or cancel school. So as the board decided, we will hold traditional snow days, no remote learning, when in-person learning is canceled. So that information was sent out to families, we also have it posted on our website. Um, the procedure has not changed. Um, if it's determined that road conditions will not be safe, um, by seven fifteen AM, school will be canceled. Um, that is for a delayed opening. Every effort is made to get a message to families between five fifteen AM and five thirty-five AM for a full day of canceled school. As always, the final decision as to whether or not children come to school is up to parents. We are geographically the largest district in the state, which makes it impossible for us to know the conditions on every road. Students will be allowed to make up any work that has been missed if the parent determines their children will stay home from school and the absence will be excused. Any questions about the winter weather annual announcement? Okay, next. Next, the budget timeline. Okay, you can tell me after. If I have a tick on, okay, thank you. Okay, yes. So next, the budget timeline that we are sharing with the board and the community. So, to kick off our budget work this year within the SAU office, um, Kathy Balinas, Business Administrator, and I meet with each principal. So this begins next week on October fifteenth. Um, also Wednesday and Friday, we have meetings with each principal, um, as well as Technology and Special Education. The board Finance Committee holds meetings on November twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth, and these two same Tuesdays and Thursdays will be at 6:00 p.m. at Crescent Lake, and when the board will hear from the principals, secondary principals the first night, elementary the second night, and then Special Education and Technology and Overview on the third night. And then the board will hold the preliminary adoption at the school board meeting on December 2nd. That will be held at New Durham School. The final adoption, the final budget hearing will be January 6th. And then, of course, the deliberative will be Saturday, February 1st at 10:00 a.m. We do have a change in location for the board to vote upon. We had a request for the January 6th meeting. Instead of being held at the KRHS Lecture Hall, the request was to hold the meeting at the Art Center for a more, a location that's more amenable to the final budget hearing. So if you'd like to make that motion.
Yeah, so that would be a change in our meeting location. So that's why we're seeking a motion tonight to basically update the, to change the January 6th, 2025 meeting location from the KRHS Lecture Hall to the Kingswood Art Center. So I asked them to make a motion.
So moved.
By Dr. Jim.
Second.
Seconded by Jim Pittman. I'll speak to it because those are requests I made to the superintendent. Usually, we do our budget hearings midway through our meetings. I'd like this year to have better locations and to do the hearings at the beginning of meetings. I think it's more fair to parents and taxpayers for us to do those opening day meeting. I'd like us to start the meeting with a budget hearing at 7 o'clock. At the final budget adoption, rather than doing the Art Center, which can be difficult for some of our board members to hear those people in the audience, it can be difficult for people to write public input just because of the way it's oriented to do it at the Art Center. I think it's more conducive and less intimidating, easier for board members to hear the public, and we'd like to do the non-publics at the end of our meetings. So people could show up, provide us budget input, and then we'll take their non-public at the end of the night. So, but what we're currently asking is, because that's how I'd like to move forward with the budget, what we're currently asking is a change of location for our January 6th meeting. Yes?
We're going to address the format of those meetings at 9:00 on tonight.
That's something to share decides. So that's when I would set the agenda. So I've set the agenda that we would start at 7 with a budget hearing, and then we'd end the meeting with a non-public. I just personally strongly feel it's more fair to taxpayers and Boeing residents and parents to be able to, if they have it put on the budget, then not have to wait for through an hour worth of meeting that they might want to show up, give us some input, and go back to what they usually do.
We're only going on location.
We're only going on location right now. I'm letting the board know that those updates will be coming as we go into the budget season. So someone says wait, you know, I thought on hold it was at 6. We'll be sure to remind all of you before the opening meeting in December, before the January meeting at, you know, to approve this vote at Kingswood Art Center, that there'll be a slight change in format. Is there any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Kathy, if you could call the roll, is there any?
Tom?
Hi.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is the New Durham Playground. So thank you to the board for the approval of commencement of construction and design of the playground structure at the September meeting. This month, we ask the board to formally accept the generous donation from the New Durham School PTO, which is slated for completion mid-month. Once the board votes to accept the gift and construction is complete, PRINX will conduct a safety inspection to ensure the playground is safe for student use. Your approval and support are crucial in advancing this much anticipated project for our students and community. So I do have a proposed motion on this document if the board agrees.
I move to accept the playground donation from the New Durham PTO.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Beth, seconded by Guy Pike. Is there any additional discussion on this matter? That's pretty straightforward. Thank you, Jim Pittman. I think he's reminding people to speak into the mic. Well, hearing, is there any further discussion? I don't know much else. Okay, hearing no further discussion. Kathy, if you could call the roll, is there any?
Tom?
Hi.
Dr. Jim?
Aye.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the James Foley Freedom Run crowdfunding request per policy DFGA for your action. The James Foley Freedom Run is proposing to have a fundraising through crowdfunding. And when fundraising efforts are expected to exceed $500, board approval is required to approve this campaign. So this is, I think the community is aware, a very well-attended and a very well-funded event, and we are eager to support it. I've included a proposed motion for your consideration.
You'll see in your packet, it's a proposed motion, as I move to approve the crowdfunding campaign by Jennifer Mary DeCarlo for the 10th Annual James W. Foley Freedom Run.
So moved.
So moved by Guy Pike.
Second.
Seconded by Mary Shilriff. Is there any discussion? I'll just say this is a really amazing event honoring a really amazing person who was a member of our community and came to a graduate. So I participated, one of the first ones when I was in high school, so it's great to see it still happening and it goes towards a great cause.
All these years later.
All these years later, I know, 10 years. Well, hearing no further discussion, Kathy, if you could call the roll.
Tom?
Hi.
Dr. Jim?
Aye.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye.
Thank you. The last item in the superintendent's report, acceptance of grant funds, Drink Water and Groundwater Trust Fund. The New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services has secured $1 million to the Drinking Water and Groundwater Trust Fund for lead remediation and drinking water across schools in New Hampshire. This grant program offers 100% reimbursement of total lead remediation costs for both public and nonpublic schools. So our administrators at Osiphe, Andrew Formier, in collaboration with Kathy Valenis, are applying for these funds. They will assist in offsetting costs given the lead remediation that's already underway at Osiphe Central. The available funding will allow us to seek reimbursement for lead remediation measures such as pipe, faucet, and outlet replacement, as well as the labor costs incurred. The language that is required in the grant application is included here. All grant recipients must obtain authority to accept grant funds and designate an authorized representative from the grantee's governing body to sign the documents. This requires a vote at a meeting of the governing body, school board or equivalent, and meeting minutes submitted. So the meeting minutes must include a statement that the governing body approves to accept and expend the funds, and to enter into a grant agreement, and identify the person under title who has the authority to sign the grant documents on behalf of the governing body. I've prepared a proposed motion for your convenience.
I move to accept and expend the grant funds from the Drinking Water and Groundwater Trust Fund and enter into a grant agreement with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, and identify Superintendent Carolyn Arakalin as the authority to sign the grant documents on behalf of the governing body.
Motion by Guy Pike, who made the second. Seconded by Tom Dickert. Is there any discussion? Yes, Dr. Beth?
I would like to know how lead remediation projects are identified by the district. If someone could answer that. I'll begin, and perhaps Kathy Valenis might supplement my comments. So the district, all the schools are required to have testing twice a year. The reports are on all the district, are on the school and district websites, and through this testing, it shows what water is acceptable for drinking, what is potable, what is not potable, and what is required for remediation. So we take the direction directly from Second Wind. There's additional information from our, one of our last building and maintenance meetings, where Second Wind was invited, and they gave a presentation of their, you know, their process and their reports. And I'm happy to say that we're complying across all schools with, you know, within these processes and reports. So that's how we take direction as far as what we're required to remediate.
Great. I would like this board to be aware that the lead levels at New Durham School are unacceptable, that they have had repeated reports of lead in their water, that they use bottled water for cooking, that there is not potable water for children at that school, and they use bottled water daily, and that I hope that when we are looking at lead remediation grant funding in the future, that we include more schools in the district, including Osiphe, which I'm very happy for them to get remediation funds. And I'm fully supportive of this proposal, but would like New Durham to be included in those efforts. Thank you.
Duly noted, I appreciate it. I don't know, you'd have to review the testing that the buildings and maintenance, yeah, well, just, I haven't reviewed New Durham specifically, but it'd be good to review the buildings and maintenance committee because they've been working on this, and just because there isn't a grant for New Durham doesn't mean ongoing remediation isn't happening in the replacement of faucets in places where there's horrible water. So it's something, I think it's also worth remembering, too, that New Hampshire's requirements aren't three times as stringent as the federal requirements, so that's, before the new state requirements, everyone was in compliance, and the state introduced higher requirements to make it safer, and we're actively, and the Buildings and Maintenance Committee has been meeting with Second Wind and with head of our maintenance staff to make sure all remediation's happening across the entire school district, no child is exposed to lead in their water.
Do we note it, I've also note that any exposure to lead has permanent effects on children in terms of their intellectual capacity and future issues regarding aggression and all kinds of other issues. So regardless of your opinions, really the stringency for those requirements, I think anything we can do to remove lead in water is a good thing.
Don't disagree. Jim Pittman?
Leave the microphone down.
Okay. Well, with that, is there any other discussion about the acceptance of this grant for lead remediation? Hearing none. Kathy, if you could call the roll.
Tom?
Hi.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Arakalin. I'll make my report pretty brief. Some correspondence from the district to some of our employees and some organizations. We had two expressions of sympathy to current employees on the passing of family members. And we had a thank you letter to the Wolfher Area Children's Center for the Magic Moments Playground that they kindly donated that we accepted at our last meeting. I assume there's no questions about that? I don't think so, but I always ask. Moving on to the reappointment of the New Hampshire School Board Association Representative to the Annual Convention. Sadly, Mary Shilriff has a conflict and won't be able to make it that day. So if there's anybody else who's attending that would like to be the NHSBA Representative to the Annual Convention later this month, definitely, you know, I like to share the leadership roles amongst members of the entire board. I'm more than happy to do it, I'm going no matter what, but it might be an opportunity for someone else to get involved in some of the leadership of the district.
What do you think?
Well, we have to vote tonight on it, because it doesn't need Mary before, so I'm asking us to re-designate to someone else. So if you want to, Tom, that's fine. You don't want to, okay, well, then, then I would, I could kindly ask the board then to appoint me as the NHSBA Representative to the Annual Convention in lieu of Mary not being able to attend.
Second.
So moved by Dr. Beth, seconded by Jim Pittman. Is there any additional input, any additional questions? I just want, I wish Mary could have made it. Mary was very excited to be involved in the Annual Convention this year, so.
So I'll go ahead and say, yes, I was, and I was heartily disappointed that I had conflict, and I think that people should not do things on the same day. Makes my life weird. Next year.
No, I was gonna say, next year, Mary. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, if you could call the roll, Kathy?
Tom?
Hi.
Dr. Jim?
Aye.
Guy?
Yep.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye.
That concludes my report, so move on to committee reports. So just as a note, we did remove the Section 4 of the Academic Affairs Committee Report, so we're not reviewing any of those withdrawal. The committee's gonna review those again when they meet again. So I'll pass it off to you, Charlene, to ask for input at first read for the recommended for adoption, the recommended for revision. Oh, and the meet, sorry, and the meeting policy is scheduled, my apologies, but yeah, it's all yours. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Sher. So the, um, closer? All right. My bullying voice is loud enough. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
So the next page in your packet this evening is the Academic Affairs Committee Meeting and Policy Review Schedule for this current school year, and you will note all the various dates, when things are happening, and when our meetings are scheduled, and I'd just like to remind everyone that all committee meetings are open to the public. And you can see the responsibilities of Academic Affairs, as well as the SAU and the school board. So that brings us to, any comment or discussion for, first of all, the policies recommended for adoption? And you can see on your agenda, the, one, two, three, the six separate policies that we're asking for any comment, and of course, at second read of the next meeting, we'll be asking for votes on those policies.
Just one quick comment on I.L.B.A.A., which is the High School Graduation Competencies Policy. In committee, we agreed that this would be revisited in one year as those competencies are being developed across the district, and the policy may need to be updated to reflect what our practice is in our schools.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to find that particular policy. Is that one that we, you know, we talked about, and we made suggestions that?
It's under, oh, you're probably looking in the big packet. I can help you.
I.L.B.A.A. on the blue book. Okay, this was, Carol Rosen, oh, got it, okay, got it. Those were the ones for, okay. So did everybody get that information?
Yeah.
Any other comments or discussion of the ones for adoption? Okay, make sure if you come up with anything that you'd like to suggest for revision. The final vote will be in the next week, and we'll have a full discussion then. The next group are the, the policies recommended for revision, starting with ACE and ending with JLDVB. Do you have any comments that they would like to agree for this time?
Apologies here, Kathy, I didn't catch this typo until today. On the header, accommodation is misspelled. Should have two Ms. in it.
Which false?
ACN, accommodation of lactation needs.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
You're fine. You probably did, I just didn't hear you.
Again, the other, another typo type thing is down in Section C on that same first page. Just in the middle, in the parentheses, it says lactation period, I think it should be plural in that context.
I feel like it should be.
Well, period of sentence, the whole sentence.
There is a lactation period in the period, but it's lactation. I think it's talking about each of the three as an individual lactation period.
And then it was saying each a lactation period.
I don't, substantially, I don't know what makes a difference.
Substantially, it should be a plural, but a yield to the majority.
I, I'm, I'm very neutral towards whether it's plural or not.
I agree, but I think it should, because we're talking about a minimum of three opportunities, and so then in parentheses, that should be, uh, plural lactation periods, I would think.
Is that what we were agreeing on?
Yeah, oh, I thought lactations period, you wanted that.
Now we're starting nursing and then.
I misunderstood.
Yeah.
Carry on though.
Good catch. So period is then plural. Thank you. Anything else?
I'm good.
And you said accommodations, so said two N's.
Up here.
Right.
I have one question once we get to the end of your report, Charlene, just about the policies for withdrawal.
Okay.
Not about the specific policies, just procedurally, um, let me make sure I'm speaking here, just procedurally, will you guys bring that forward still with the second read and ask for a suspension of the rules so we can?
Hold on, are we done with any comments on, uh, policies up for revision?
I have one question. Um, in, uh, J L D V V, um, Caroline, there's a biennial review you mentioned. Do you know when the next biennial review will occur?
Good. Okay, this here.
This is, oh, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mark.
You're fine, I'll make sure everyone gets their discussion in. Um, my question was, are you gonna ask us to suspend the rules at the next meeting once you've reviewed those, um, policies for withdrawals so that they come, they still are in line with this set of policies? Or are you gonna just put it off until you do the first read for the next set of policies? So I'm just curious, procedurally, for when I'm setting the agenda.
It's, it's my understanding that our plan was to, in essence, temporarily table the ones that were scheduled for first read tonight for withdrawal, and then we'll take them up as an addendum at our next meeting, at which time those policies that we're going to be talking about again would be, my guess, I would think would be added to the batch that we'll have gone through for withdrawal at our next meeting.
So not, so remember, next meeting is for a second read?
It's gonna be for a second read for everything except the policies up for withdrawal tonight.
Okay.
Since we removed those from first read.
So you're gonna have, we're gonna have a second read and a first read at the next meeting, or are we just?
We're going to have a second read. My, my feeling in terms of efficiency is that the ones that we've just gone through for adoption and revision will be up for second read at the next meeting, as well as, um, yes, and then the ones for withdrawal, uh, would be up for first read.
Got it.
Since we're not doing first read tonight, and we're going to add those to what we do for, uh, withdrawal for first read at the next academic affairs committee. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure when we make the agenda that if you wanted a first read with those second reads, or if you wanted it for first read on the December meeting with the other first read for the next batch policies, but you wanna do a first read for the withdrawal tonight with the second read of the policies for first read tonight?
We've removed, we've removed the policies for recommended for withdrawal for first read, we've removed that.
Correct.
Tonight. So the first opportunity we would have to review those would be after our next academic affairs committee meeting. And so we're going to just take this little batch and pluck it out, which we've done, and then put it in our batch for our next scheduled meeting, which is November the fourth. Am I, am I, am I explaining that correctly?
Right. If you want some work for withdrawal tonight and add them to the new, the next block of the policy.
Yeah, I guess I'm asking, when are you gonna move them, the first read to the board? At the eleven seven meeting, or at the twelve two meeting?
No.
At the eleven seven meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. So that means we'll have a section to begin with a first read for those policies for withdrawal, then a section for second read?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to.
Yeah, go right there.
So per policy, we need to provide boards with at least five days for materials, and that is three days later. Um, so we won't be, um, there, there's not enough time for, to satisfy that policy. Um, and in addition, depending on the board's discussion on that academic affairs meeting, um, we will need to edit, we possibly may need to edit policies and give the rest of the board members time to review them, um, so it would not be available for the November seventh meeting.
Does that, it sounds to me then, since academic affairs is meeting on the fourth and the board meeting is the seventh, there's no five days, so does that mean that we won't have time to have any policy, um, discussion at the eleven seventh?
I was asking logistically because you, you would do your first read for these policies that you remove for first read at twelve two, and then you would do your second read at eleven six.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not following that. It sounds to me, since we have to allow five days for academic affairs meeting to the next board meeting for the board members to have those policies, it sounds to me as if we're not gonna be able to bring any policies forward for first or second, for first read on eleven seven.
Yeah, you don't, you won't do first read at the next meeting, you always do second read, so we'll have.
I, I know, but then there's some, there's some, um, we're, we're grappling with when we're going to be able to do the ones that we've taken out for first read tonight, and it sounds to me as that, as though we're not gonna be able to bring any policies forward at the eleven seven meeting unless we change our meeting date.
No, not for first read. You'll be able to bring on the secondary policies forward, but the first read policies, no. But you can still bring them forward for first read at the twelve two meeting, so for the December meeting.
Are you, are you saying that there's no issue with, with not having the minimum five days?
No, that's, yeah, I think you're, I think you're confused, Charlene, what I'm saying is.
Yeah, I think I, I am confused, but it's.
Sorry, I'm fine.
Now, I'd be reminded by Caroline that, oh gee, we're not gonna have five days before the board meeting after our committee has met.
So you'll have to, you'll have to take them up at twelve two with all the other first read in your next batch of policies.
Okay, if everybody wants to have no, no policies on eleven seven and they have a bulk load on twelve two.
You, you will, 'cause we have all these policies tonight for second read that we'll be discussing and editing.
Right, the second read ones, yes, 'cause we've already got those.
Yeah, we never do second read and first read on the same meeting. We do a first read at a meeting and then we do a second read at the next meeting. So that's why I was asking, I was confused, how are we gonna do a first read with such a short turnaround for you guys? Because you guys will review the meeting, the first read policies for December on eleven four, and so what I'm asking is, are we gonna do the policies we removed from the agenda tonight for first read, will you just do them with your next batch of policies? And it seems like based on our board policy that, that might be the requirement. I'm just trying to understand if we're formulating the agenda, so when we formulate the agenda for twelve two, I need to remember to include these policies for withdrawal on it.
Okay.
That's all, just so that we're, we're, I'm just trying to figure out the logistics while we're all here and I can get a hold of you and the senior committee.
Okay.
Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah, that makes sense now.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, so make it so that, maybe we can, that'll bring it down, though, it's. Mark?
On what?
On recommendations for revisions?
No, we're not gonna do that until the second read.
Yeah, second.
Well, I asked for, I asked for comments and then, then, um, I remember you, um, made corrections, but we were not gonna actually vote on, on acceptance until our next meeting.
Yeah, so your grammatical errors and stuff, don't update that in the meeting packet for our next meeting, then at second read we'll have substantive debate over the policies and the additional edits and the finalization at second read. So there's no board actually taking that. So is there anything else as a part of your, um, report, Charlene, I'm sorry, confused you.
No, I, I just was trying to get things done and, and, you know, take care of these policies that are lurking in limbo right now, but we can't do that at the next meeting, it'll be December second.
Great, perfect, so we'll address that at December second. Um, moving on to buildings and maintenance, Jim Pittman, so we have some turf test results per the motion of the last meeting, and, um, so we can have a brief discussion on that too.
Okay, but before we get to that, let me just quickly recount a few of the activities that we had at the, uh, committee meeting on September twenty fourth. We had, uh, some folks from Puffton Borough, Chief Thompson and Captain Pike come before the committee to discuss changing the configuration of the emergency backup generator. They have a very clunky, portable thing, and they would like to entertain the idea of putting a, a permanent generator in place with transfer switches and so on, that the, that the town would pay to have configured, maybe some expenses for the, uh, school district, but that has not been figured out, so, uh, we just agreed to continue exploration of that concept. Now, in the same vein, we also had, uh, concerning this facility here, uh, continuing discussion, and in this case, it was a MOU between, between Effingham and Freedom to allow Freedom to use this as a, uh, emergency shelter as well. And the motion was approved to, um, to support the MOU with, with a few minor edits, so that'll happen between the towns of Effingham and Freedom. We also had an update on the training for the S R funds and everything is coming down to the final wrapping up. We had some delays as a result of some damaged equipment that arrived at, uh, Ospey Center School, Central School, but, uh, that seems to be moving forwards, so. Then we did to our turf toxicology. Now, for the members up here on the board, you have some reports, and the, the motions at the committee meeting were to continue to pursue the testing of the turf field. Now, since that time, we did receive laboratory reports from the manufacturer, Shaw Sports, and they provided for us laboratory, independent laboratories, not their laboratories, independent laboratories, and they contracted, uh, two tests for PFAS and for metals, specifically heavy metals like mercury and so forth. And they had two different products, and I don't think there's any reason to drill down into the details of these, they're, they cover a lot of different substances. Far as I know, uh, none of us on the committee are, are chemists in our free time, um, so I think this is gonna require a little additional work. I also had requested that we have some follow-up in terms of naming the third-party lab, which was missing for the metal tests. But to summarize, the result of these tests, which was on their manufactured product, they did not detect any of the PFAS chemicals or metals that exceeded or were even considered measurable, um, based on any standards that were set forth. Now, again, this is for manufacturing, this is not for our turf field, which has been out in the weather and out in the sun and so on for, for a decade, um, so it still leaves open the question of whether our field has, um, degraded in some way where now these chemicals may be of concern. So this will be, uh, continued, uh, in our next meeting, and that is scheduled for, wait for it.
Twenty ninth of October, I think?
I'm sorry, is that again? Uh, October twenty ninth, yes, thank you, October twenty ninth, uh, to P S B U. So that concludes my report. Unless there are questions, yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that, Jim. Um, I did, um, finally receive, um, well, I, um, had offered to look into resources for third-party testing of our existing turf field, and I appreciate, uh, the effort to get, um, Shaw Industries' information about their testing on current product. I think, correct, if I'm, if I'm wrong, please, I think our turf field has been in use for twelve years, is that correct?
It's not great.
It was installed in two thousand and twelve.
It was installed in two thousand and twelve.
Okay, so that's twelve years, okay. Um, and so there, the person who will be an excellent resource, and I've already shared this with, um, Leader Pittman, and, and you were minimal to me looping her into, uh, uh, and even what I wanted to do, her name is Wendy Thomas, she's the state representative for District Twelve, and she's on the, um, science, science something's, and Energy Committee, and Bob's got the information. Um, but she's, uh, the resource that I was, uh, trying to find, and what I thought I could do, uh, for informational purposes and for efficiency is to, um, use my district email address, send her an email, loop in, uh, Leader Pittman and, um, Superintendent Eric Halian and, uh, Cathy O'Blinnis, so that she knows what we're looking for and that she can provide us the information. And, um, if there are any, you know, questions, that she would be a, a good, she's gonna be a good resource, so I'll, I'll send that email so that everyone is, is aware, and then, um, you know, there could be follow-up contact with her.
Thank you, appreciate that, Charlene, thanks for coordinating, everyone. Yes, Mary?
I have a question, uh, what is the fuel for the generators?
Will be propane.
Dr. Beth, do you have any question?
Just a little one, um, Jim, do you guys find a vendor that can do the testing on the turf field itself, or is that still unresolved?
Still open question.
Okay.
I think the, between Charlene and the committee and the resources that they're finding, they should get some that way, but, um, you know, at least Shaw's current report in their independent, um, testing, you know, it's pretty promising, but I hear Charlene's promise too, so. I guess stay tuned, right?
Absolutely.
Excellent, is that, um, it for your report? Does anyone else have any additional questions about Jim's report?
That is my report.
Hearing no additional input, we'll move on to finance. Um, finance, we have our, well, I think that Dr. Eric Allen, uh, covered it very well earlier, but as you know, the administrative team is gonna be meeting the month of October to start formulating their, their budgets, and then the finance committee will start meeting November twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. Um, we'll get a better idea of where we're at in our collective bargaining agreement negotiations and how many funding needs to be appropriated for that. Um, and then at the December second board meeting, we will open the, uh, the meeting with a public hearing, um, on the preliminary budgets, so there'll be a brief presentation and then a public hearing. And then on January sixth, at the, um, Kingsburg Center, will be our final adoption and final budget hearings, we'll do open for a public hearing beginning of that meeting, and then, um, you know, board members will provide input, feedback, amendments, et cetera, to the, uh, budget, but hopefully at that point we'll have done enough granular research and understanding of, you know, what resources we should be allocating for the following school year. Um, with that, I'll move it to Dr. Manning for Human Resources. Here, I'm asking this.
Thank you. Well, I don't have really much on your report, it's a still motion, so I'm going with that. We do have a real quad, um, at some of the centers, and presentation before the school room. General, may I ask? Oh, okay.
Yeah? Just for the, uh, state of the public, would you tell us what the academic lots, you question?
Oh, the governor, the legislature, he.
Inquest, quest is?
Inquest. Quis is sports staff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Sometimes we get caught up in our jargon and forget that everyone lives in the same jargon.
We have a sort of timeline now.
Thank you, all right, so next, we have closing activities, uh, advanced planning, you'll see future meeting dates, uh, there's no school on Columbus Day, formerly Indigenous Peoples' Day, um, that's October fourteenth, October twenty-ninth, Buildings and Maintenance Committee meeting, um, two P M. at the SBU office, November fourth, Academics, Academic Affairs Committee meeting, November fifth, no school parent teacher conferences, I believe that's also Election Day, uh, November sixth, early release, parent garden, teacher conferences, uh, November seventh, which is a Thursday, we have a school board meeting at Ospey Central School, the way that the dates we set our school calendar this year because of Election Day, to give parents and families a day off to accommodate for voting, um, forces have a meeting on a Thursday, so that board meeting will be at Ospey Central School, November seventh, Thursday, and then we'll have our finance meeting meetings at Crescent Lake on, uh, November twelfth, November thirteenth, and November fourteenth, each one at six P M. Please see G W R S D dot org backslash calendar for the most current details, subject to change, and, um, if you have, please contact the SBU office at six oh three five six nine one six five eight, three days prior to a meeting, if you require any modifications, handle our auxiliary aid to access any of our meetings. And, um, I think that's it for our advanced planning. Finally, we have public input. Oh, yes, sorry, I missed the other one, yes.
That's fine, I just wanted you back to make the comment.
Of course, very good.
Uh, some people may re- remember that this board voted to label, uh, what is now called Columbus Day, it's Indigenous Peoples' Day a couple of years ago, and they may be wondering why is it Columbus Day again? And this was the result of some legislation, which was put in this spring that required if we were taking state funds that we would have to call it Columbus Day, a rather heavy-handed piece of legislation, in my opinion, but that is the reason why we had to go back to Columbus Day, unfortunately.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jim, and that's true for a few of the holidays, and so people may see that updated in the future, but, um, I'd like to move to public. Yeah, Tom, what is, uh, what agenda you have, what are you commenting on?
Future dates and events.
Oh, you have a future date and event to add?
I'm wondering if it would be appropriate to put the date of the election, uh, in there as a, a school layout.
Yeah. We can add that to our calendar online, Tom.
Sure, maybe.
Yeah, I think if we could do that, that'd be much appreciated. Awesome. All right, are we good, with the public input? Excellent, hard. Public input, fifteen minutes total, three minutes for individuals unless extended by vote of the board, um, everyone be respectful, no cross chatter, no directing comments at anybody in the crowd, um, it'd be much appreciated, and please state your name and your child residency.
Um, Bobby Bevan, Wolfboro, um, a couple things, uh, first, thank you so much for pointing out the lead, I think that the school board is here to represent the people, and you speaking up tonight for your committee, very important. Um, I also want to point out to the families that on our G W R S D website, we do have the, have the lead levels tested on there, it's under the family tab, and it's something we should all be watching. Um, we decided this fifty years ago, the fact that we're still fighting with lead and water fifty years later after federal regulation, um, is a little heartbreaking. Uh, wanted to verify the freedom on this here, ten nineteen, October nineteenth? Yes. Thank you, and then, sorry, it was a long meeting, you guys had a lot, a lot going on. Um, the turf field, thank you for moving forward with this, and, um, our field has to be tested, so I appreciate the fact that we're not gonna test something that's being manufactured now, but something that was manufactured twelve years ago. Um, the biggest thing that I wanted to talk about tonight is last March, our representatives came before you, and as we enter budget season, we need to talk about the reality of what's happening with the convile case, but more specifically, we need to talk about the fact that our direct representation in our school district put in an amicus brief file to take away our state aid. I just pulled up our numbers from our last deliberative session last year to look at our actuals. Our actuals that we received in twenty twenty-three are nine millions seventy-nine thousand, sorry, uh, and about nine million eighty thousand dollars. We will lose that funding if, if that passes, so I know last March they came and they said this guy is falling sweat funds, this guy was not falling then, this guy is falling now, nine million dollars, that's thirty percent of our budget that the state is providing those adequacy grants for, and if, if the Supreme Court, the New Hampshire Supreme Court decides that they do not have to fund us based on the decision that they're moving this case forward, it's based on Dobbs and our Supreme, national, our Supreme Court of the United States overturned Dobbs, they're trying to base it on the same precedence. If we lose our adequate funding, I know right now it's four thousand one hundred dollars, but with the aid for special ed and the other aid, that's nine million dollars the budget committee is going to have to look at, so please follow the convile case and please follow what's going on in our state right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other additional? Oh, look at that, exactly, three minutes, thank you. Um, is there any other additional public input? Don't jump. Just kidding. Um, we'll see no additional public input, I would ask for your motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Beth?
Sorry.
Seconded by Tom Bigford, is there any discussion? Very young, that would be all for us to adjourn.
Aye.
Dr. Jim?
Aye.
Good guy.
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlie?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Aye. All right, we're adjourned.